And it's live.
Where's the clerk at? Cherry? Oh, there you are. Okay. Missed you. Didn't see you. Did Mike call in or anything? Cherry? Okay. Live six o'clock. How's everyone doing?
Good.
I guess Mike will be coming up for too long. We'll go ahead and start our committee meeting. Welcome, everybody. And I'm glad to see you back. Jackie, thank you for taking the gavel on my absence. I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome. Glad you're back, Cliff.
All right. Hopefully, I can I can stay back. All right. Thank you. We want to go ahead and take a look at what we have laid out on the agenda for tonight. Meeting here at the committee. But I'm gonna go ahead and start with the mayor.
Like I always say, happy Monday. We made it through another week, and here we are upon another week. Want to start off by talking a little bit about today had some conversation with Councilwoman Andrews. I'll make you sound official, Kayla. Had conversation about possibly helping Shocking City Schools out with clinic space within their building with COVID funds. Also doing a project for shields for our city schools. We basically got reallocated $196,000 additional in COVID funding. It was just a redisbursement from areas, townships that didn't use their COVID money. So me and Cherry thought it'd be great to just jump on some more money and took that dispersment of 196,000. Going to help the schools out with a couple of projects. Were also been working with they within the utilities to start a tower project for wireless water meters upgrade. It's part of future plans of how we read meters within our city. So we thought, what a, you know, a better way to do it than with the funding that be received. So we're going to start working on that. Bob has received the email for civil service rules and updating civil service rules. The fire chief wants to get a get a test done probably in February, so we need to get those to you guys to approve. That'll be at the next meeting, December 14. Everything's pretty much locked down. Just need Bob to do some late night reading and get them approved on his end. Working on the demo on Locust. We're basically getting that property and we're going to get it taken care of. Kind of a different process, how we're going to go about doing that. Jeff can go into more detail about that. If you have questions, it would be the property on Sixth and Locust where the tree had fallen. We just need to, the longer we wait, the longer it's going to sit there. So we're going to work on another avenue of getting things sped up a little quicker with that process. Christmas decorations will be going up downtown tomorrow. I know everyone put their tree up in October and is ready for Christmas and maybe, you know, trying to hurry this year along, but we are going to work. A lot of people don't realize that Christmas decorations really don't fall on the city's responsibility. The city is just kind enough to help the downtown, our town organization collaborate with them to help them put them up. So we're going to get that done so we can add a little Christmas cheer downtown. A lot of movement downtown, some rejuvenization, working on a project to try to figure out new trees for downtown. Working with organizations to get that done. Just want to thank everyone for the letters, phone calls, emails that have came into my office about traffic, property code, even got a phone call. Talked to Mrs. Chapman the day about, you know, where's the lights at downtown? And explained to her that we're working on them. Really a good phone call. She said she never expected me to call her back. She thought maybe my secretary would call her back. So I called Mrs. Chapman. And what was cool was I always get something out of everybody. And just, you know, her taking pride in her community, you know, she's glad to see things going on, even with the pandemic. And she has a sign when she walks out of her house that says, see the possibilities. So that's what I took away from her today. And I see the possibilities. Really, you know, it's Thanksgiving week. I'm thankful for the the crew of people that surrounds me and the community that surrounds me and all the organizations that are working together to get something accomplished within our community. So it's kind of crazy that we're winding the year down, but it's been a very eventful year and just want to say a special thanks to everyone who has put up with me this year. One thing I will leave you on, we have a Kirby Hausman, Hausman Marketing has put together a step up mask up video. The city officials, small business, big business, hospital, chamber. A lot of different people. You may even see Governor DeWine's face on the video once it's all complete. It is posted now, City Hall's Facebook page, Kirby shared it. There's multiple places on Facebook and social media that has been posted. Very important that if we want to see family members next year, if we want to surround ourselves with those people, that we protect those people. So I ask you all in the community to step up and mask up. If anyone has any questions, I will answer them.
Any questions for the mayor?
Mark, you mentioned shields for the city schools. Is that, are those shields around the desk?
Yeah, they, yeah, they originally ordered shields that really didn't stand up. They're flimsy. And these shields are more of a sturdier barrier for the students and they will be at their desk.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that report. Service director?
I'll try to be brief, Cliff. Looks like the ladder truck will be delivered the week of December 7. I don't know if you guys see any of the pictures. Mike and a couple of his firemen went up there and done a final inspection on it. Everything looked good. They even got to drive it to Lambo Field for some pictures. So that was kind of cool. And it needs to come. It'll stop in Findlay, Ohio for some minor upgrades. And then should be here the week of December 7. So we're looking forward to getting that. The mayor mentioned the Christmas lights. We're planning on doing that tomorrow night. The brackets were left on the poles from last year, so it shouldn't take much more than a night to get those hung. The HVAC upgrade at City Hall's underway. We started that process yesterday. I would ask if you guys need to have a meeting. Try not to plan on using the where we have our committee meetings there in the center because that's kind of a work table right now with all the plans and everything. So but you can hold it to where we can have it in the downstairs conference room and social distance. That'd be good. And all the other city buildings have had their upgrades completed with new ionizers. So they should be much safer on the air quality in the buildings for our employees and our residents that would need to go to those buildings. And we're continuing on with our leaf pickup. New machine is working very well. We're almost well, just to give you an example, a good day for us would be 40 cubic yards of leaves with the old system. Last week, we had a day where we picked up 250 cubic yards of leaves. So I know I hear from the residents that we're behind, but we're really far ahead. Normally, we're picking up leaves in the Christmas day. And with the new system, I don't see, we'll be anywhere near that this year. So and that's all I have unless you guys have questions.
Any questions for Max? All right. Thank you. Bob, you have very much?
Yeah, let me explain the Locust Street and what we're going to do there. If you recall, we have an ordinance that deals with abandoned or dangerous structures. That typically goes through the housing committee who recommend abatement. We then have to notify the property owner or person in charge. And after a certain time period, if they don't abate the the problem, then we take care of it. And there's a whole process. We didn't use that ordinance on the Gilbert properties because I knew that we were looking at multiple court actions. And I wanted to use the revised code sections instead. For this particular property, the property is still owned by two people that are deceased. There has been no estate filed for these people. So my choices were to file an estate on behalf of the city for these people. Then tried to administer the estate, not having any of the information necessary to really do it. So that I would have somebody to sue with the revised code sections that we use for the Gilbert property. And I could see that that was going to take many, many, many months, even without appeals that we had on the Gilbert property. My other choice would be to use the city code section, which is also a problem because the owners are deceased. However, through Jess's help, I met with or talked to the children of the deceased who all have agreed to allow us to tear down the property. And have signed a piece of paper or will sign a piece of paper that I drafted that allows us to do so and waives all the notice requirements contained within the city code section. Which will allow us to tear down the property right away. Now technically, that's probably not the 100% absolute best way to do it. But in my mind, based upon the dangerous condition of this property, based upon the the heirs of the owners of this property, all consenting. I don't think the city would be in any danger of being sued. So I'm willing to allow this to go through in this fashion. So that is what the ordinance tonight is there for you to decide to go through the city code section to abate this ordinance or bait abate this nuisance. We would tear down the property. We would place the cost of the abatement onto the taxes. And eventually, no one will pay the real estate taxes. So the property would be turned over to the city and we can then turn it over to the land bank. That part of it may take a year, year and a half, but we can tear down the property right away. And make sure that nobody gets injured by this property. Is there any questions with respect to that process?
Bob, you're speaking to 62-20?
I don't have the ordinance number in front of me, but I believe so.
Yeah, and that's who you want that added to the agenda?
Yeah, Max asked by a letter that you added to the agenda based upon the emergency circumstances behind this ordinance, I would ask that you do so.
Housing committee, any suggestions or objections? All right, then, regular council will need a motion to add it to the agenda, then we'll be able to vote on it.
Cliff? I have nothing.
I buy that property and I think quicker we can get that down, the better off that area as far as safety is. It's a real danger. So, you know, if everybody gets a chance, drive by and take a look.
There's really no other choice other than to do it this way, even though it's really not as a lawyer, the way I want to do it. But based upon the facts of the case, it would just take us way too long to pursue it the way that I would really feel comfortable. So this is my workaround to get this accomplished quickly.
Okay.
I have nothing else unless there's questions.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Bob, congratulations on that track and well done.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Auditor? Cherry?
Hi, good evening. Start with the email they had sent to you guys just to follow up. If you have any questions. Cherry has already, I think, mailed you an amended ordinance for 63-20. The CARES Act, as Mark said, that when it was redistributed, when I had emailed you the other day, I didn't realize, I didn't know there was going to be a little bit of interest added to it. So that was the additional $53.56. So just to amend that amount. And the county, our health department found out Friday that they are receiving a sub grant from the Koshockton County General Health District. The whole grant totals $211 or $211,473. At this point, the health department, they are going to be hiring a young lady starting Monday for the additional contact tracing. So I have added her expenses that we can use, you know, from this grant money and the few items that Catherine knows that she needs and has placed orders for. So that's why I would like to go ahead and ask for the additional to be added tonight. And this is reimbursing, so she'll submit everything to the county. Unfortunately, with the, you know, having the contact tracer, it would be nice if they, this on the state level, if they extend that December 30 deadline. But as Catherine said, you know, so we could continue to draw on that $200,000. But if they cut it off, you know, December 30, Catherine's only expecting to be able to spend this $19,000. So it doesn't give much lead time to spend that money that was redistributed. So that if you, you know, if you have any other questions on that, I can answer that's that's what that was for and then ask for you to to amend that and then pass that emergency tonight. Next week or in two weeks when we meet on the 14th, I know one transfer that I will need. Dave K. Dry had asked that we transfer $5,000. I'm going to take it from his water power purchase line to his water line sludge hauling line. Just ran a little bit short this year, so that's what it'll finish out for the for the rest of the rest of the year. But in the meantime, if it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and keep doing like I usually do this time of the year. I'm going to be really looking at all our line items and you know, from the appropriations, how many hundreds of line items that we have. So I'm going to make sure that I have those setting in a good place for you and for us on the 14th, thinking that might be your last council meeting of the of the year. So if it's okay, I'll probably just keep shooting emails. You know, as I'm going over here, those this next week and, you know, the next two weeks, actually. So if that's okay, I'd like to just continue to do that with you. And my final comment is step up, mask up. Okay, got it? Step up, mask up. Thank you.
Any questions for Cherry? Sure, the ordinance you were referring to for not the transfers, but the of the amendment, which one was that you referred to?
6320 appropriations.
6320.
Yeah, and I think Cherry emailed it to everybody here just right before the meeting started. So everybody, if you can click on your emails, you should see a good, clean copy with the the additional added on to it.
From 6320, you'll need amended and then we'll need to vote on it.
Yes, please.
Any questions? All righty. Let's see. Property investigator, have anything?
I have nothing other than what Bob explained to you for down on Locust Street. That came together really well. Appreciate all Bob's help on that. I've got things working to get it down, so hopefully it will be down by the end of the year. For me, so you all know, I have a surgery scheduled December the 8th that's going to put me out for between four and eight weeks without any, an ankle rebuild coming. So I will be working from home as soon as I get back where I can do that. I'm guessing I'll probably be off a week or two before I can start doing some stuff from home, but I will be working from home and trying to coordinate things from there. So if anything you might need, you can email me and I'll try to get things moving from there. Unless you have questions, that's, I guess I should let you know that the machine that was being used on Elm Street, the gentleman that that was doing that process, Mr. Carter, they did find out that that machine was sabotaged. We'd heard that there might have been something happened to it. It was sabotaged. Somebody poured something in his gas tank, blew his machine up. He rented a machine for a day and took both properties down into a pile. He was supposedly get him to get a machine this week. He'd run a machine for two weeks. They were the deliverer. He told me he would have those properties cleaned up by the end of this week. So if you have questions, I'll try to answer that. If not, that's all I have for you.
Hey, thank you.
Jeff?
Yes.
This Glenn. Are we actively helping him look into charges for the sabotage?
You know, I told him he needs to contact the sheriff's office and do a formal complaint. So it's really at this point time out of our hands between him and the sheriff's office.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Clerk, do you have anything? Okay. Finance committee? Anything?
I don't have anything. I'd just like to thank Cherry for keeping us on track for the end of the year and appropriations and everything. She's doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cliff?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry, I did forget to say that I emailed everybody out a new copy of the 2021 appropriations. So I just wanted to double check and make sure everybody did get that. It and I only needed the one final amount to go in there involving the West Lafayette, the water capital improvement, the amount that I was waiting for Jeanette Weir's Wiki that I was working with through Omega. So I have that in there at $700,000. What we think we're going to get to pay in 2021 towards the project because the stuff's coming through, you know, really fast right now for it, but there's still going to be a little bit remaining that'll be paid in 2021. But I forgot to mention, I actually set it out here, meant to mention it to everybody that, you know, they have that. So if there's any other questions, let me know on that.
Which ordinance you referring to, Cherry?
Uh, what's the ordinance number? It's at second reading, 58-20.
Yeah, 58-20. You looking for two more, two readings tonight?
It can still take its course tonight and pass on the 14th is fine.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, the ordinance committee?
I would just recommend that we do add 6220 to the agenda tonight. When we get into our meeting and that we probably should pass that in emergency.
Okay. And that was discussed.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Infrastructure committee? Rant and Economic Committee? Housing and Property Maintenance Committee?
Nothing.
Parks and Recreation Committee?
Nothing.
Insurance Committee? Rules Committee?
No, sir.
Did you get the email from the fire chief regarding Rule 12? Anyone get that?
I didn't notice that. No, sir.
Yes.
In discussion on that, he thinks maybe the fire department shouldn't be listed in that Rule F section.
I think Max had also, and we probably should take that out and the
EMS.
EMS, yeah, because we're down there in contract with them. And who knows how long that's been in those rules.
Are you looking to amend that tonight and pass it?
What do you think, Glenn?
I personally didn't have a chance to look at it. We can if everybody's comfortable. If not, certainly next meeting.
We don't have to. I just want to know what your preference was. Do you want to take it until next meeting? We have time.
One more time.
Okay, so we can get it right and then present it.
Yes.
So we don't want to put that on the agenda tonight? Do we want that on the agenda?
Anybody else?
Okay, well, we'll wait. We'll wait on it then. Insurance Committee? Oh, we get that already. No more Rules Committee?
No, sir.
All right. Anything else?
I was going to say, if I could jump back to the insurance, Mark, you might want to, you know, just let everybody know, we typically do, I'm sorry, I didn't say something to you, but we usually say, you know, that we did renew our contract with our insurance and Mark was a really good negotiator. So what they wanted to come in, Matt, you know, Mark fought that. And we were able to get the percentage reduced. Was it 7% Mark from what they came in? I think, but just that we went ahead and renewed again with Ultra. So go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, they were that like a 2% savings and, you know, I think it didn't warrant it warranted more savings than 2%. So I got them at a 7%. Overall, I think it was 20,000 more than last year, which, I mean, when you're talking millions, you know, a couple million dollars, 20,000. Pretty big win. So I think we got a fair deal. Next year, we're going to be, we're going to get out ahead of it. So we're kind of, our backs aren't against the wall. Let's see what our options are month before we need to to come up with a decision. So I, you know, I love negotiating and it was a learning process for me. Like I said, I think we needed more time, but I think the deal that we have is fair and and really and really is, you know, pretty a decent deal for not only the employees, but, but for the city itself. So had a lot of fun negotiating. I wish I just had a couple more months. So we could have explored other options, but next year I promise you we'll be exploring options earlier and, and seeing if, if what we have is best and see if we can save the taxpayers more money. So.
Okay, thank you very much, Claire. Anything else? Go ahead.
Yeah, you had asked me to take part in a Zoom meeting. I've had about enough of those, but this was an interesting meeting. I guess it was titled resetting public health strategy. It was a nationwide meeting. And the lady that did most of the talking and fielding of questions was the epidemiologist for global health at the Council on Foreign Relations. And to make a long story short, basically, everybody has the same problems. And I know Mark and Cherry have both talked about masking up and most of the communities that spoke up during this Zoom meeting, that, that's their issue. They have businesses that won't enforce the mask mandates and they have cities that won't, or states that won't, counties that won't request mask mandates and therefore it's an issue. So it's just not here locally or in our region or in our state. It's, it's everywhere in the country. It was an interesting meeting. Even my wife listened in and commented that it was interesting. So it must have been really interesting. So. We, we were a part of that. So thanks, Cliff, for asking me to do that.
Sure. Thank you for attending, Roger. I appreciate that. Thank you for that information also. Anything else?
How about one public service announcement? The opportunity is conducting a coat, hat and glove drive. Anyone interested in donating a gently used coat, hat, gloves, or a new whatever, we're going to collect those at the fourth floor of the high school by the cafeteria on December second from four to six. And we will mask up and come to the car and get whatever donations there are. The plan is, and this, this idea comes from one of my staff members, is to hang those items from the trees on Main Street so that our homeless and needy residents can get a coat, a hat, gloves, whatever they need. So we will be hanging those on the seventh of December, starting at three o'clock. Ethan Blair hosts, has donated hangers and bags. So we are currently getting ready for that program. And I appreciate our staff and our students for even thinking of that idea to help the homeless in our community. Thank you.
Great move.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, folks, I have six thirty. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn the committee meeting. See you at seven, regular council. Thank you.
Chad, will you leave the pledge for us tonight?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Roger, did you say all the coats and donations will go downtown?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know if any of those was going to go to students beforehand or not.
No, they're all going downtown.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Roger, was that, was that, was that December 2nd?
Yes, when we're collecting.
Yes.
And then we're going to hang them downtown on the 7th.
Okay.
Yes, there were some questions emailed in after our committee meeting, so I'm going to bring that up again during the council meeting if Reverend Bickers will permit me to do that.
I'm sure he will.
Absolutely, take all the time you need.
That was actually the beacon, Roger, that posed that question, so.
Who are we missing? I see Cherry. Is everybody ready? All right, I have 7:00 PM. Today's date is November 23rd, 2020. The time now is 7:00 PM. This is our regular council meeting. I'd ask the clerk to please call the room.
Gross.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Salmons.
Here.
Andrews.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Turner.
Eric.
Michler.
Eric.
Here.
We're going to ask Mr. Johnson to lead us in the pledge and Mr. Gross to lead us in invocation. Will you stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody standing for invocation. For the God, again, we thank you for this opportunity to serve our city. I pray that you would just be with us tonight in all that is said and done. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Council should have had an opportunity to review the minutes dated November the 9th, 2020. Any questions? Discussion, addition, deletion?
I'll make a motion that the minutes be accepted.
They move that the minutes for November 9th be accepted. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Turner, a second?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Turner, a second? Anything further? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
I probably should have abstained since I was not at that meeting. So I will abstain.
All right.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
Fished enough numbers to approve. Those minutes, November the 9th, are approved. Was there any public input clerk? In emails? Text messages?
We, we did receive an email from Tara Grasik asking what was Mr. Moore saying regarding the hat, gloves, and coat donation. Who is sponsoring it? He cut out on my video, so I was unable to catch that.
Mr. Moore, your honor.
All right, the Koshakton Opportunity School is sponsoring a coat, hat, and glove drive. On December 2nd, anyone wishing to donate gently used or new coats, hats, gloves can do so on the fourth floor of Koshakton High School by the cafeteria. We will come out to your car and pick up whatever donation you have. We will have our mask on. People can also drop items off at the John Family Services Building, Monday through Friday between 9:00 and 3:00, and then they will see that we get those. And then our plan is to, on December 7th, starting at 3:00 o'clock, is to hang those items from trees on Main Street downtown, which will allow any of our homeless population or residents in need of winter clothing to access those. Again, thanks, Nathan Blaisos, for donating hangers and bags for us to be able to do that. This idea was brought to me by one of our staff members, Diana McKee, and the rest of the staff, and the students jumped on board quickly, so we're getting this together and we're going to make it happen. So again, you can donate, Monday through Friday, at JFS, between 9:00 and 4:00, or December 2nd, between 4:00 and 6:00, at the fourth floor level of the high school. And it's the Koshakton Opportunity School that is sponsoring that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. That was a great explanation and information. We appreciate that.
Cliff?
Yes.
Max, could I ask Roger a question, please?
All right, yes, yes.
Roger, do you need any help from the city as far as hauling? We can provide any trucks or anything for that?
I don't think so, Max. Appreciate the offer. I did have a former Opportunity School Board member that's offered his full-size van if we needed. I think we probably have enough staff and a couple of our staff members have pretty big pickup trucks, so we should be in good shape. If not, I'll let you know. But thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I want to move to addition. We have an ordinance we need to have added to the agenda. It's ordinance 62-20. We discuss that in committee tonight. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We add 62-20 to the agenda.
They move that? Who's second, Ms. Michler?
Michler.
Anything further? Clerk call the room.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
62-20 is added to the agenda. While we're on the ordinances, we also discussed making an amendment to 63-20. Why don't we go ahead and do that now? Make an amendment to 63-20. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to amend?
I'll second.
Second? Is there anything further? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
As discussed in committee, that ordinance is amended. Thank you. I will move to a standing committee report. Are there any? And we'll entertain the mayor's report.
Like I said, we're working on some, like I said in committee, I'm sorry, we're working on some CARES Act money that we, we received additional of with the schools and with a couple of projects within, within the city utilities department. Next council meeting, I'll have the civil service rules. Like I said, we're working on some, like I said in committee, I'm sorry, we're working on some CARES Act money that we, we received additional of with the schools and with a couple of projects within, within the city utilities department. Next council meeting, I'll have the civil service rules and really working on that demo, Christmas lights. I mean, we're, we're moving. I wanted to welcome Lanny Spalding to the executive director's job of our town. It's really a welcome addition to City Hall. Really look forward to working with him. I stomped around a couple of buildings with him so far this past week. Full of energy, full of contacts. I think it will definitely be a great, great working relationship between my administration and Lanny downtown, and I wish him all the luck in the world. I told him he had like one month to turn it around, so we'll see what he's made of. Just want to reiterate the step-up, mask-up video we did on, on social media with Kirby's help and with the community's help. Really, we are going in the wrong direction with COVID. Thanksgiving's coming up, and I like to say, if you want to see your family next Thanksgiving, let's do what we need to do this Thanksgiving. COVID is very real. COVID is very serious. We can't overwhelm our healthcare facilities, or if you have a heart attack, then you won't be able to get into the hospital. I know we all agree to disagree on information that we've been handed, misinformation that people put out on social media and on the internet. We are definitely, you know, with Thanksgiving coming up, let's give thanks. Let's give thanks in small groups. Let's not welcome any more COVID into our community. I think right now, we are a community of giving. If we can give blood to each other, and we can give hats, coats, gloves, socks to each other, if we can give canned foods to each other, if we can look out for our neighbors and take them things over the holidays, if we can do that, then I think wearing a mask is not too much to ask. And if I truly go to bed at night thinking that if we want to be known for something, I think right now, in our community, in our city, in our county, I think if we want to be known for something, what better than slowing the spread down and saying, hey, we have it under control right here in Koshockton County and the city of Koshockton. So I can't think of a better gift that we can all give each other than keeping each other safe. And I, I just, you know, it's, it's been amazing just the, the reaction of the public, and, and I realize some people will never get through to, but the, the majority of the people, I believe, want to listen, want to reach out for the facts, and want to actually help each other. So I want to help everyone in every angle and work together to make this place better, but guess what? We need healthy people to do that. So it's time. I don't care if you believe or you don't believe, just put a mask on. I think that's the biggest thing right now that everyone's asking. And, you know, I know people don't like to listen. I've went through phases in my life, being most of that life, that I didn't want to listen either. Just put a mask on. Please step up and mask up. Roger, I always listened, right?
Answer that.
I want everyone to have a happy, safe, and enjoyable Thanksgiving. Wear a mask, wash your hands, social distance. I don't know how many times we can say it. No huge groups, no ragers at your house, Chad, for Thanksgiving. And I only live right down the street. I'm watching you. So let's, I think that's the biggest thing that we can give each other and give thanks about is the community we live in and keeping each other safe. So that's all I want to, want to say, and, and I appreciate, it's, it's crazy that we, you know, could quite possibly be going into our last meeting in December in a couple of weeks, and it's just, it's been a wild year, and I know we're all ready for it to be over with, so I just want everyone to stay safe, and let's get here 2021, and let's hope, you know, things just turn around. But without people doing what they need to do, the end just gets further out of sight instead of further inside. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? Thank you for that report. Safety and Service Director.
I have nothing further to add from what we discussed in committee, Cliff, other than I should give a really brief update on West Lafayette progress. We had our contractors meeting last Thursday. Everything is moving on schedule. We should be able to begin supplying water to the village on January 1. That's what the plan is now. All of our chlorine tests and bacteria tests have come back with no issues at all, so as far as the interior lines of the village, that's moving rapidly along, and I feel like they're a little ahead of schedule as well. You know, our final phase will be installing all the wireless meters. That'll start sometime after the first of the year. But right now, the West Lafayette project's looking very good, so. And I'm open to any questions, and I'll give everybody a happy Thanksgiving as well.
Thank you. Any questions for the Service Director?
Got a question, but I'm usually in the last among those to know. I just happened here, in case anybody else didn't. Congratulations to Max and his bride on their anniversary.
Thanks.
Very good, very good. Anything further? Thank you for that report. Law Director's report.
Cherry, was my law director's report submitted to council?
Yes, it was emailed November the 18th.
Beyond that written report, I have nothing unless there are questions.
Are there any questions from council to the law director? I'm going to ask the clerk if there's any more reports, if he just regoes into the record for us, that have been received.
That's all I have.
Okay, so we have those in the record that presented. Thank you very much. We'll have the auditor's report.
Good evening. I actually don't have a report tonight unless anybody has any questions on the appropriations that you have or the ordinance or transfers, so, other than that, happy Thanksgiving.
Alrighty. Any questions for? Alright, property code inspector's report. Is Jeff not with us? No, he's not. Okay. Then we'll move right along into legislation. We've already added what we wanted to the agenda and amended. I'll just go right down the line here. Bear with me. First reading. Our first reading, I'm going to ask the clerk to read 60-20, then we'll go up to 62-20. 60-20, first reading.
An ordinance to amend the city of Koshockton personnel policy manual.
This ordinance will take its course. Now I'll ask the clerk to read 62-20, 62-20.
An ordinance ordering the demolition of the insecure, dangerous, or hazardous structure located at 604 Locust Street in the city of Koshockton and authorizing the service director to enter into a contract to do so.
You heard the first reading of 62-20. Are there any questions?
Michler, I suspend the rules and give it a second reading.
Johnson, second.
Alright, anything further? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Ross.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
I'd ask the clerk to give a second reading to 62-20.
An ordinance ordering the demolition of the insecure, dangerous, or hazardous structure located at 604 Locust Street in the city of Koshockton and authorizing the service director to enter into a contract to do so.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of 62-20. Are there any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion. We, I'll make a motion. We suspend the rules and give it a third reading.
Andrew makes a motion to the first. Is there a second?
I'll second. Moore.
Mr. Moore, second. Anything further? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
Ask the clerk to give a third reading to 62-20.
An ordinance ordering the demolition of the insecure, dangerous, or hazardous structure located at 604 Locust Street in the city of Koshockton and authorizing the service director to enter into a contract to do so.
You heard the third reading of 62-20. Are there any questions or discussion? Being now the question is, should you pass this ordinance? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
62-20 is adopted. Thank you. First reading, 60-20, 60-20. We did it already, and it's taking its course. Okay, I didn't mark it. Thank you. 61-20?
Transfers.
You've heard the first reading of 61-20. Are there any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion. We suspend the rules and give it a second reading.
Salmons moves to suspend. Is there a second? Mr. Johnson, second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, second. Anything further? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
Ask the clerk to give a second reading to 61-20.
Transfers.
You've heard the second reading of 61-20. Any questions or discussion?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and give it a third reading.
Move to suspend by Mr. Johnson.
This is Michelle.
Michelle, second? Anything further? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
Ask the clerk to give a third reading. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Third reading to 61-20, a third reading. Ask the clerk to read.
Transfers.
You've heard the third reading of 61-20. Are there any questions or discussion? Being now the question is, should you pass this ordinance? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
It is adopted. I'd ask the clerk to read first reading, 63-20, 63-20.
Appropriations.
You've heard the first reading of 63-20. Are there any questions or discussion?
Make, 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 suspend the rules and give it a second reading.
Move, Mr. Johnson, is there a second?
I'll second. Moore.
Mr. Moore, seconds. Anything further? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
Ask the clerk to give a second reading to 63-20.
Appropriations.
You've heard the second reading of 63-20. Are there any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and give it a third reading.
Move to suspend by Ms. Andrews. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Michelle.
Michelle, second? Anything further? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
I would ask the clerk to give a third reading to 63-20.
Appropriations.
You've heard the third reading. Are there any questions, discussion? Being now the question is, should you pass this ordinance? Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
63-20 is adopted. Thank you. Second reading, second reading. 58-20, I'd ask the clerk to read.
An ordinance to appropriate funds for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Koshockton, state of Ohio, for January 1, 2021, through December 31st, 2021.
Through the second reading of 58-20, this will take its course. Ask the clerk to read second reading, 59-20. Second reading, 59-20.
An ordinance establishing the 2021 pay schedule for the recreation department and seasonal workers.
You've heard the second reading of 59-20. Will this also take its course? Alright. There are no third readings? There's no resolution? Is there any old business? Is there any new business?
President Bickers, I have one.
Go right ahead.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, it's a license renewal for Eric Dobson doing business as Pub 229 on Main Street. Would counsel, is there a hearing on this?
Is there a hearing that's requested by council? No hearing is requested.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any communications from the administration? Any communications from council? Being now, before we adjourn, I would echo the sentiments of those on council to please have a safe and a happy Thanksgiving, and please put your mask on. That's a must. I appreciate you guys. I want to see you again for years to come. So pass that on to your families, and may you have a happy Thanksgiving and a safe one. Is there a motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
Second?
Second.
Clerk call the room.
Gross.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Salmons.
Yes.
Andrews.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Michler.
Yes.
Adjourned. See you next time.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.